Recording in progress.
All the orders and regular meeting of the Rialto City Council, roll call. Mayor Garnes, here. Or, here. Councilmember Wilson, here. Councilmember Woodall, here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic which has passed, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and nor would the council have jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph Stone Brown Act. Items requiring council actions now listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda. If the, for consideration, pardon me, if the council directs unless they finally get made by at least two thirds of the council. That the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes. Would anyone like to address the council? And if you could, I'm just, you know, say your name and your address, and that would be great. Thank you.
My name's Cal Fisher, and live at two ten Bellevue Avenue, and my wife Cindy. And the reason we're here is that you guys would look into the, supposed to put on the agenda. About waiting on permit fees for all of the earthquake related permits for the permit fees and stuff and.
She just left it out there.
But, and, because, you know, we've watched the town, two town hall meetings. And, you know, we're, you know, excited to see all the help that we were going to be getting, you know, the community and the citizens and the residences. And because we weren't, but out of our house is like, you know, we really, and she's called numerous times. The number that we were given on the town hall meetings and no response has ever, we've never gotten a call back. And, you know, there's all these agencies that were going to help us that were been affected and. You know, the part of it is like, yeah, we don't, aren't looking to, you know, have a big handout with, with. Helping us with our stuff, but just seeing. You know, all the other relief efforts for, you know, low income renters and, but us as in the middle class. But, and the agencies were supposed to be kind of helping us come through all this. We just haven't seen anything coming from this town hall meeting that, that they're supposedly set up for us. And we've also done, city's also done research on different communities in California. Through, through cities and counties that have waived permit fees for disaster affected. Areas on helping rebuild homes or rebuilding structures or getting stuff repaired. And so that's what she's kind of handed out in different areas.
So, listening through both of the town hall meetings, our takeaway from that was that. People were on the ground, ready to help. All the four four one five thousand number, they are not ready. I have called weekly and they've taken my information, but there is not anything that's ready there. I don't know that you folks are aware of that. But, but nothing was in place like it was supposed to be. So trying to get your case manager, when I called to get my case manager, they're not ready. In fact, today, I didn't even get a call back. And they should cut their hours back.
So anyway, we just would like you guys to take a. Consider putting this on the agenda, on being able to waive the permit fees. I know it's not a big thing, but for the people that have been affected. You know, without having earthquake insurance, and probably most people don't. You know, it's out of pocket and stuff that we're already putting out and, so just having a little bit of relief that, so.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up and thank you for the argument. Anyone else like to?
Dan, two twelve W. I'm just kind of in the same vein as Cal and Cindy. It just seemed like we were getting hit. I mean, it's a, you know, we already got nailed and. We're having to find money, get loans and everything else and having trouble with all the agencies and all that. And then to have the fees come in, it's just kind of a. Kick and a gut. And so it would be really good and it would kind of be a little bit of a bolster for our attitude about everything. Something could, we could talk about this, something that we can, something.
Thank you. That's the one thing we didn't mention is if you guys consider that, if it would be retroactive to people that have already been charged the permit fees.
Hi, my name is Tom Morgan, owner of five four one Wildwood Shops Coffee. The reason why I'm here today is that I could be put on the agenda about the Elm Lane Waterline that's going down the road. I was, Elm Lane Waterline, the line, the water line, it just happens like. I was informed a couple of days ago that it won't be fixed until next year, which that's unacceptable for me. We are one of the one and only striving businesses here in town. And every time that that water gets shut off, I have employees that have to be, we close unexpectedly. Players lose wages, but also I have filtration systems in there that is expensive, machines that are expensive. Every time that you guys water line breaks, it fogs up my filters. It can become a safety hazard with the water, the groundwater that comes into my coffee shop. So, I would like, if it be put on the agenda, why it can't be fixed this year and why is it being pushed off until next year? I keep complaining to Randy, my wife complains, and this is going to be the next step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zach Shaple. I'm coming on behalf of the Rialto Fire Department. And as some of you may know, we're in the Wolfsoe Rim Bidding, the health and playground unit, and we just got the stage set up. So we just got some grant funding to get a new swing set, a new tire swing and a little excavator. So naturally you put on the agenda to support us in this and help us with the cost of getting a new title swing. I only brought one model this, a few days ago, back around. But we just got some grant funding that we're utilizing to get this equipment. And the city is able to support us, will also be able to add to the funds and maybe get something moving about. So, thank you.
You guys remember, you might remember a couple of weeks ago, about the sewer thing, okay? I can remember exactly what I asked that day. I, I remembered that, and I asked, by the way, Steven Saunders, and this one, Ray Del. And, and I remember exactly what I asked. I asked. After you guys passed, don't need to pay the sewer bill anymore. And I said, okay. Does that mean I will get my money back for the last two months? So I can give that money to the person towards utilities for where I am currently staying. And I remember the answer was yes, okay? Yes. So a couple of days after, I go to City Hall here, fully expecting to get a check for a hundred and eight fifty six. And I got a form from you guys that night, okay? Took it home, filled it out, came back, I put this there, and I set it down for the receptionist, and she, she took it and she goes. Okay, all right, I got it. I'll take care of it. And I'm standing there and I'm going. You'll take care of it? What, what do you mean you'll take care of it? Yeah, I'll take care of it. I'm confused. I don't know what you mean by that. No, I'll credit your account. You'll credit my account? How does that help me? How does that, how can I give that hundred and eight dollars to the person for staying for some utilities? A credit? I don't need a credit on my account. I need the hundred and eight dollars so I can give it to the person. So, the office lady, the, she, she took it personal, okay? Was I upset? Oh, yes. Was I confused? Yes. And then she goes, I go, why do you take it so personally? She goes, well, you're mad. You're angry. She goes, you're angry. And I go, angry? No, 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 I'm not angry, okay? And then I said, I need to talk to somebody else, somebody higher up. And then this gentleman, Travis, he comes out and, and he's got the minutes. For that beer. He goes, well, it's all right here. It's all in the minutes, okay? There's not one word in the minutes that says you'll get a credit, okay? I'm talking about serious stuff right now. I'm, I'm displaced. And I can't believe that the city did that to me. I just wanted my money back so I could go to the bank, cash the check and give it to the person. I don't understand. I might not be back in my house until next year. Credit my account? I would like the city, the council to vote right now that I can get a check. That I can take to my bank, not a credit, that doesn't help me right now.
Well, because it happens that we have a credit recognition from New Year's community and like, thank you, Mayor, you know, for your staff. And she, and, well, of course, they all have the really neat characters on, and I've seen them. You know, interact with the citizens of your community in the nicest ways. It's, you know, it's really hard to find in all of Mobile County for the same character quality. And I can, I can relate to urgency and displacement, like this gentleman is going through. And, and those emotions to my. My first appearance here is kind of like a camp ball, we were pulled for today. I thank you for having me back. So, I am, you know, considering this as, as a quality community to. To maybe locate to from McKennaville. And I appreciate that. So, I picked up an email today and it was, you know, qualities of leadership and stuff. And so some of the first ideas of leadership are to seek out opportunity and shop for ideas. And, and I'm doing that because I'm trying to start a business. And I'd like to introduce that to the community, but, you know, I would like to. You know, seek out some advice on who to help you about, you know, how to help out and contribute to a community without stepping on toes. And, and, you know, try and understand, you know, maybe the twenty year plan. To get a smart path for business and a family and, you know. I just really can't say enough about the way I've seen the people at the highest level here. React with our citizens and so. But when seeking out opportunity, there are some doors that close immediately that I don't think should. And so I would like to. I'm, I'm sure I'm in a place where I can ask to put anything on the calendar since I'm just another new kid in town. But I would like to maybe network with some folks and get, get the information I need to, to. Put my next step forward. And I think if you're time, I'm gonna.
Just one quick favor for you. And I really truly think that a little compassion, okay? I don't know who's displaced here, okay? Who can't live in their home right now, okay? But just a little compassion, Frank Wilson here, he shows compassion. Some of you do, and some of you don't. Just a little compassion. That'd be nice, okay? I've been here for ten years in my house, but just a tiny bit of compassion, guys, because we pray.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to comment with the name? Found your email. And I will, well, probably.
Mayor? The different people asked, have you identified somebody?
Yeah, I have written down and I was gonna absolutely.
You're gonna do that?
That's it.
Thank you.
So now we will, I'm going to the consent calendar, um. Oh, let me stop. Is this something you want to run out and trust that I want to talk to the city manager and?
I'm not, I'm not, you're, you're, I'm not trying to tell you how to do this.
No, I know.
But, but in the past, we have run into the situation if someone came and asked, asked to have something agendaized.
Absolutely.
And, and the council took no action, then we were told that it was not from Mr. Lot, but from a previous city manager that. That essentially the city had, the, the council had said no. And so.
Well, that's not what we do.
Well, I mean, that's what, I mean.
That's the appearance, that's the perception.
Well, that's what we were told later when somebody brought, they brought an issue to this council and they asked for something. I'm not. I, I think I remember what it was. It's not pork. And then later they came back and they, they said nothing was done about it. It was never agendaized. You know, we're never talking about. And so they came back and they brought it up again, a little bit upset. And so when they brought that up, the city manager told us that you, essentially had come before the council or the council that said no. By, by virtue of the fact that, that they took no action. And so that's all I'm, I've seen that happen in the past and I just, I don't want it to happen again.
Well, I don't want it to happen either. And that's why I wrote everything down, is there, to see, but if you want to, if you want to as a council. I'll ask for our opinion if we want to. To act on it because of. I was, I was, yes, I was actually, yeah, I know, but, yeah. So, I have every intention of addressing this with the city manager and getting these things agendaized. Um, so, is that satisfactory? Then I, and I'm sorry, I, I agree with you, Councilmember Wilson, that, that is the perception. If we don't act on it now, but I enjoy that with my intent.
And, and I'm not trying to, you know, whatever, but we understand this because we do it.
Right.
All the time. And sometimes the public doesn't understand that there's a procedure that you have to go through to make things work.
Right.
Because of state laws and all these.
Absolutely.
Rules. And so that's just all.
Thank you. Now we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to approve the items from the consent calendar? Uh, the member, anyone from the public? Any email? Okay, then, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So, we have a motion, is there a second? Oh, second. They have a motion out of second. Motion to carry the trial zero. Special presentations. There's a presentation, an update from the city engineer for the PhD and a possible offer of a name for the city manager to sign. They didn't miss something? Staffing voice, city manager, page twenty nine in our battery.
Thank you, Mayor Garnes, members of the council. You may notice some changes to the agenda. Not so much the format of the agenda, but this is the first rollout of our, our new software for the agenda management. Setup through Unity Code Civic Plus. And so there are. Uh, going to be some changes obviously to the page numbering system. And then the sections are going to be listed in the upper right for the council moving forward. So not terribly significant changes, but this is also an opportunity if individual council members have any feedback in terms of. Of the setup for the agenda, we can more easily make changes right now as opposed to months from now. So this is still a work in progress. Some of the page numbering on the. Agenda itself had to be manually entered, so we're hoping that that also is, is added in there to kind of ease the process of the agenda compilation. But other than that, I want to make you aware of just that, that simple change. In the system. We are also, Rialto's annual cleanup day is going to continue this year. So that's Saturday, May thirteenth, the day before Mother's Day, located at the school district parking lot. So people can bring their bulk materials, Rialto residents can bring their additional bulk or any other waste items up to the. School district for disposal. Also, I want to make sure that the council is aware that a new round of hazard mitigation grants is opening up with the potential for. Guaranteed matches for the city's portion of that. So hazard mitigation is. Under federal law, anytime a disaster occurs, a certain set aside of the total cost of these disasters. Has to be allocated for hazard mitigation grants. And so those are, for example, water tank replacement, water seismic work. In this case, the new round of hazard mitigation grants also appears at the moment to have. Some climate and energy resiliency components to it. So we are currently working with Redwood Coast Energy Authority who did the initial study for. Not just the power resiliency project for City Hall, but also down at the corporation yard. So you may recall. We have had some energy efficiency work done down at the corporation yard. A Tesla battery installed, one remaining component is still outstanding and that's the addition of solar. Of a solar project down there. So RCA, RCEA, the Redwood Coast Energy Authority did some preliminary work. Three or four years ago, pre pandemic. In doing those initial studies of what it would cost and what roughly a solar project would look like down there. They're going to update those figures. And our intent is to submit a notice of interest, which is a non binding submission so that we can get some feedback as to whether that's a competitive. A project. I know it's been the goal of the council for quite some time to add energy. Production down in the plant and solar to help lower the costs and provide a more resilient energy situation down at the plant. Obviously, Rialto is surrounded by bridges and seismically vulnerable areas. And so right now we have, you know, between the Tesla battery and the diesel generator, approximately about forty eight hours worth of energy resiliency. But obviously, in a major, the tanks had off, we wouldn't be able to run the plants, both water and wastewater, much longer than that. So the idea there is potentially to submit a hazard mitigation grant, providing we get some positive feedback as to its competitiveness. For that particular project. With that, I'll go ahead and return to the council and see if there's any questions of myself or staff.
Thank you, city manager. No questions. Thank you. It looks like you all went. No questions, thank you, it looks like you all were busy. How's that looking?
Uh, not, not a whole bunch, but just one comment on the, on the Tesla thing we've, uh, we, you brought up earlier in the study session, or the wastewater superintendent. The, the, with the UV is a lot, it's a lot more expensive, and it would also be vulnerable to not being able to filter our, um, uh, treatment. And so the, the system that you're talking about with the, the solar, the solar, and all that would be a great advantage to have that type of battery system.
Yeah, so our, our chemical costs would, uh, dramatically decrease, but the energy costs would, would go up. But with solar there, uh, augmenting that, um, you know, there's a strong possibility that it could stay the same, or even, uh, even though we're using more electricity.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think the solar. I think I'm good on the rest of, um, I guess I have a question for the police chief, but that was, he's not here.
Yeah, uh, yeah, just for clarification, Chief of Police is out of town.
Right, so I, I don't have any questions for him. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, with the annual cleanup day, are we going to be learning that? Or the?
One of the things we need to issue is a newsletter over, uh, the next couple of weeks. Uh, we have a lot of information we need to get out to the.
Okay, and it'll only be a certain amount, I mean, at a certain point, close it off?
Yeah, so it has specific hours, and I, I can't off the top of my head remember, but I believe it's like roughly nine AM to one. Uh, and then, uh, you know, it just depends on how many, uh, how, how much you can fill your truck.
Yeah.
And how, how often, and how often you can circle back, but there's no actual individual limit.
Okay, um, but that's good to know, I mean, some people might want to get there early, because I imagine a lot of people still have some cleanup stuff from here.
You definitely want to go, you don't want to wait till the last minute, because when that one o'clock time cut happens, they literally shut it down in a minute.
I hope some people can do this, that's what. We had questions, Danny, for the police chief. So I will say those, and that's done when he's here. Are there any questions from the public? There any emails? I will close. Close the staff report. Now move on to special presentations. Presentation and update from the city manager, the city engineer, PhD, and possible authorization for the city manager to sign three scope for service related to, one, Riedel neighborhood pedestrian connectivity improvements, two, Douglas tank and water system improvements, and three, Eel River Crossing Pipeline Seismic Rental Project, Phase One, A. In a total amount of two million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, page thirty-four in our package.
So, uh, 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 thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. Rebecca Crowe with GHD, the city's engineer, is here, uh, to discuss the, provide an update, the answer to your questions the council has, and uh, proposed the scopes, uh, as attached.
Thank you.
With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, hi Rebecca, welcome, thank you for coming.
Um, thank you, uh, Serna, thank you, the council for the opportunity to present in front of you today. Um, I'll, I'll go through the slides, if you have a question on the slide, it's right with me, and we're at that, and I'm also willing to answer questions at the end. Um, we're gonna go over, talk a little bit about some, um, uh, finishing up and some upcoming transportation projects, um, two major drinking water projects that the city's been pursuing that we now have some funding for, um, status of some ongoing wastewater projects, um, a little bit about, uh, what GHD is doing to support the city for, um, you know, earthquake follow-up and damage assessments reports, and then lastly, some future funding opportunities. Wait, 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 wait.
There we go.
Maybe I was walking in the wrong way, okay, okay. Um, so, uh, on transportation, these are the active projects that we have going on right now. Um, we have the Safe Roots to School project, this is a, uh, older project that's finally finishing up, the last little piece is to do a, um, uh, user count, and pedestrian and traffic user count, so just because of, you know, the earthquake and pandemic and things like that, we're working with Caltrans on an acceptable methodology. Once that's done, that project should be closed out, so, um, congratulations. Um, the next one is the Eel River Trail project, so that's the project that will, um, will, uh, will connect again from the end of Edwards over to David, um, um, along the Eel River, so the design and environmental permitting is ongoing, a lot of what we're doing right now is really looking at surveying, make sure we know where we can put a trail and things like that. Um, and the goal for that project is to start construction in twenty twenty-four, and that project is grant-funded. Luke Hallinan with my office is helping me manage it, I have to check with him which grant we finally got, we submitted it like five times or something like that, and, um,
Cleanwater.
Yeah, there we go, thank you.
And was that, um, did they extend the date because of the earthquake, because that sounds like it's gonna go.
My understanding is we have an extension request in for that grant, but we haven't heard back yet. Um, and then, um, lastly, as part of, um, the city's participation in, uh, HCOG, um, there is a county-wide project being completed that's funded through HCOG, and they'll, they'll, they're providing like a road condition assessment, so we should get the results of that.
See, I'm gonna have one other question on that.
Sure.
Eel River Trail project, um, the other project is the trees, I don't know, are the engineers involved in that? Oh, okay. Never mind, thank you.
Um, okay, and then upcoming project, so one of the items that's on your agenda for approval tonight is the, um, Neighborhood Pedestrian Connectivity Project, so Riedel was programmed for, you know, a little over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to design, construct the Riedel Neighborhood Pedestrian Connectivity Project, I have a map on the next slide, but it's looking at some new sidewalks, curb ramps, just, just some minor improvements here and there. Um, the goal is to, you know, get some of the city's fair share of money that comes into the county. Um, so it's, uh, eight hundred and nineteen thousand from the state and then forty-one thousand from local funds. And, and like I said, the, the agenda's on the council, and then next, you know, we meet monthly with Kyle and the city staff to make sure that, you know, we're on track for all the things that we need, so upcoming, um, we'll be looking at doing some, you know, street assessments to be positioning the city for future funding, looking at Second Street, Elko Street, um, Oval Avenue, and then, and then trying to match those up with, uh, funding sources. So those are some of the future transportation projects.
And, and just for clarity, this is, this is mine, I say Elko is actually Elm.
Sorry. Taken out, um, so, yeah, please.
I just, you know, for that, for that, when you said citywide street improvements and you got, you're doing the engineering to figure out what it's gonna take, what you fix that.
Very preliminary, the goal is to set it up to be able to then apply for other funding.
Right, and that's pretty, you would have to be preliminary, it's.
Yes.
But I think we addressed it any once before, but we weren't able to go very far because of the cost.
Yeah, and the city's been really good about doing little projects, kind of, you know, every year is funds allowed, um, but I know now with certain other cost considerations, with the earthquake in, in particular, I'm really trying to look for other ways to bring money into the city.
Thanks.
Yeah, and then, um, yeah, on the next slide here, um, we just have a little graphic of what that neighborhood pedestrian connectivity improvement project will look like, so the blue lines there, you can see, are where we're looking at making improvements, we're looking to add in missing sidewalks, curb, V A ramps, um, similar intersections, um, and, and how the sidewalk connects between driveways.
Question. Um, the blue line, that painter or center, or kind of, I don't know.
Yes, in the center is the, is the school.
Yeah.
And, uh, so yeah, on the right side would be Ironman Street, uh, which, uh, currently doesn't really have, uh, much sidewalk at all.
Yeah.
And then all of this is really around the school, so, uh, so there's also some inbuilt that needs to happen on Center Street in front of the school, and then, um, also, uh, painter.
Yeah.
And also to improve the, the cross there between Ironman and Cross, you know, it'll get to the north side.
Is this still cold, is this still safe grounds?
No, this is HCOG's dip funding, is my understanding, so it's money that comes to the county, and then Stephen Pearl, who works with GHD, is currently the city's representation, do the technical advisory committee to HCOG, so part of his job working for the city is to make sure when funds are available that we're, we're hands up, it was actually, um, the person bringing it to him, the nature that we got these funds, uh, Mr. Nathan Sanger, uh, but, yeah, those are community.
And it was also, uh, this is, this is a scaled-down version, it's the ATP grant that we submitted three or four years ago. Um, so because the, the funding for this dip money is, is specific and it's not gonna go up, we had to scale down that, so that work was actually done by Rebecca several years ago, um, uh, for a site, for, uh, a sidewalk improvement project, which I know was one of the council's objectives.
And then when we get to the last slide too, we'll look at, you know, what, what's in the future for many. Any other questions on transportation before I move to the water? Um, to me, these next two slides are very exciting, um, I've had the pleasure of working with Riedel since the beginning of my career, I've been working here in Hope County for almost twenty-two years, one of the first projects I worked on was for city Riedel on a bunch of different things, but in the last couple of years, um, we supported the city in applying for a drinking water state revolving fund planning grant. And we've leveraged that planning grant in multiple ways, one of those, um, broke the project out into two pieces, and we'll see both those pieces tonight. One piece we submitted for funding to the state water board, so we submitted a construction funding application. So that's what's finally come through from the state is the construction funding application, so a little bit of luck and impatience, and I really feel sorry for the folks who, I wish I could, I wish I could get the state to give me money faster, um. They're not a very good organization, but we finally got the grant agreement, so this is a hundred percent, um, grant funding, the grant is for, um, you know, just under thirteen million dollars, it includes the money for, um, finishing off design for a number of improvements to the town, we'll still work with Randy, because I think there's some work he's had to do in the near term to address the earthquake, so that, you know, that may allow us to do other, you know, other pieces that weren't necessarily in this. Um, but we've got most of the project pretty well designed using the planning grant, and then the other portion is to replace, there's the two tanks of the Douglas site, there's the old two hundred and fifty thousand gallon, um, redwood tank, so this grant would cover replacement of that tank with a new five hundred thousand gallon unbladed bolted steel tank. And so that's, um, really proud of the city, really proud of all, like, just the patience, it took a lot of work, there's so much, you have to, okay, here's your other piece of info, here's your other piece of info, you're constantly, and the state was very, very slow at, at turning funds around, so it, it, I, I would be embarrassed a little bit if I were the state, and I don't understand why it takes so long, but it's really great that the city has brought these funds, um, and is, you know, you can kind of see through time, the investment in the planning, and now on the construction side of it. Are there questions on, on this portion of the project? Next, we're gonna start moving over to the Eel River Crossing.
Yeah, is, is the replacement tank the same size as the redwood tank, or is it bigger?
It's bigger, it's gonna be twice the size.
Be five hundred.
Yeah. When does that start? So there's, uh, see, is there, I don't think I have a bit, goal would be to be in construction next. Okay, because we leveraged the planning funds, we've got design pretty far, especially on the distribution side, and then the tank, a lot of that, you know, will, will be up to the actual final manufacturer, so we're just doing like site prep and kind of, and things like that, so, you know, our goal is to have the project out to bid by early twenty twenty-four, um, and that should, that should be doable, um, just be, again, because a lot of the work that's gone into it already. And they covered, and the scope that we have in front of you covers, uh, from, sort of where the project is now, through, you know, putting together the final bid package, bidding, and then construction management, we do anticipate, um, the need for a lot of on-the-ground construction management, um, we're gonna attempt, once you open up the screen, start looking at things, all sorts of stuff is gonna happen, so we're gonna want to make sure that we're here to, um, support, so they're ready to keep doing other work.
Are we allowed to ask that question?
No, um, when the.
I think I'll, yeah, I will, I think you turn your over. Yeah.
It's a good question, I don't even know who the person to address it to, is it this project starting in twenty twenty-four that's holding up repairs on lines for like businesses that are having issues with water? So we're trying to slide normal repairs under the cover of this then, or?
I'm not a term here, but this line is actually on the list to get done, and, uh, with the funding and everything due to the earthquake, it's supposed to fast forward, but now it's still being played for a year.
We are, we are gonna ask the state forward, because we do have mostly environmental for this project done, if there's a possibility to move chunks of it forward, but they're not typically open to that, and it also makes it kind of inefficient and cost inefficient, because then you're separating it out a piece, so all, you know, all the admin costs for one piece, but, um.
Right.
I, I, I would have loved to have gotten the money sooner and the construction sooner, and I just definitely sympathize.
Trying to find ways to keep businesses from regretting moving to Riedel instead of putting us in one street.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm, I'm not your finance director or anything, but the hope would be that if, you know, something has to move forward now, something else could take its place, that, that, you know, the long term.
Um, do you have anything that would show the public, uh, what it is that you consider high priority? Water different, distribution lines and valves? Is, is there something that?
I can text me for the city on what they're willing to share, these, um, this plan that was developed in close coordination with Randy, so, you know, really taking into account what, what the, the existing, um, what the condition of the city's existing pipes are, there was a project that, um, formerly was an LGG hand, and did, I want to say somewhere between like two thousand and five and two thousand and seven time period, so that we know that there's a lot of major pipelines that were placed in town, but not a lot of the smaller lines, this project was really focusing on a lot of the smaller lines that weren't replaced, so that, that's part of the project, so the city has the current set of ninety percent design plans that they could share.
Yeah.
So.
And it's, yeah, it's also, yeah, it's also all these little yellow ones, although I, I know that's actually. Are there other questions on this one?
Oh, okay. Good question, I just, for the homes that are going to be getting a sidewalk in front of it, which is great, little sidewalk, will the homeowners be getting an assessment for contributing to that, or is it covered because it's all grant funded?
It would be grant funded, we're not looking at asking owners to pay for the sidewalk. Like, I mean, as far as I, I thought it was, but that's not my understanding, that the intent was to use the rent.
Oh, I, when your back started.
Oh, sorry, um, no, we would not be looking to put an assessment on homeowners to help pay for the sidewalks, the intent was to use the grant funds to get as much sidewalk as possible. Now, I would just like to raise my hand and let everyone know that construction costs are increasing at a very fast pace, so it is likely that we will have our design plans have probably like some additive items, or just be looking at those kinds of things, because we don't want to end up in a situation where you have a construction project that you can't afford to build. Um, so we will be looking at some additive items, just knowing that you know, lead times are increasing, you know, materials costs are increasing, and that's, that's just what we're seeing in the market, and we can't control that. But, yeah, the goal is to get as much as we can. All right, I'm gonna move on to the next water project, um. So, so Kyle had mentioned hazard mitigation, and several years ago, um, the city submitted two hazard mitigation grants. Um, one was for the Douglas tank, but since that's being covered a hundred percent grant funded by the state board, we decided just let the state board fund it. Um, the other was the Eel River Crossing, um. Currently, there is what's called a yellow mine pipe. It was actually, I think, a temporary pipe that was put in the eighties after there were bits in the eighties. They go through the southbound bridge, like these little stands and things like that. I'm surprised we didn't see more damage or who knows even what's damaged in there. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it, but we definitely have concerns about that pipeline in the bridge. So we applied to Cal O E S, applied to FEMA through Cal O E S for funding. And so the city just got notification in January that they were awarded funding. At the time when we applied for the hazard, this hazard mitigation grant in twenty twenty, it was required that the city put in a twenty five percent match and the state pays seventy five percent. Like Kyle mentioned, they have now updated the program. There's options for future projects that we apply for, but this part project in the way that it was set up, the city is required to do a twenty five percent match. What G H D is doing to help address that is that we are working to submit a funding application to the state board. And the drinking water state revolving fund program that would A, pay for the twenty five percent match and B, pay for the fact that this cost estimate was put together in twenty twenty. We're we're both asking for the match and additional funds, knowing that it's likely that costs will increase. The way that FEMA doles out the funds is they they dole it out kind of in pieces. So when you see the word phase one A, essentially one A is the work that we need to do to figure out all the final environmental and where we're doing ground disturbance. Because essentially phase one B, we want to get some geotech folk out here. We want to be digging, you know, in the ground. And due to environmental regulations, you can't do that until you have approval. So what's in front of you tonight for this project is just that phase one A that gets us to the point where we we've, you know, we know the project footprint. We have enough environmental information that FEMA can approve it. And again, yeah, again, just really, we're proud of the city because it takes patience. We submitted these in, I mean, twenty twenty. And then we've been, we've been submitting multiple responses to requests for information. It takes a lot of patience. So that's this project that's moving forward. Other question for this one? Or, excellent. Thank you. Next, a little bit on wastewater. We continue to have regular discussion with Derek on moving the San Antonio evaluation study forward. You've probably heard it a lot right now. We have an amendment, you know, the state to request additional funds that would essentially take that project to almost final design and get it better prepared for construction. We also asked for some additional funding for doing additional camera work or documenting earthquake damage and and some other pieces. We're all, this is also the the project that's helping to move forward on the disinfection issues that the that the city's having compliance issues with. So moving forward, we did pull a piece out and we're moving it forward towards construction. But before I move to that slide, are there any questions just on the general wastewater project and what we're doing there? So we did leverage the San Antonio evaluation planning study information and put together a clean water state revolving fund construction application for replacement of that painter street line. So that's in the state board's hands right now. There's a a little bit of back and forth right now. They have some questions or responding to some questions. But as far as we know, they're likely to fund it. So we're, you know, I'm state board takes a long time to do anything. So and they actually, they shut down essentially April, May, June. They they shut down. They don't issue any new agreements. They don't issue any funding reimbursements. So I'm hopeful like July, August time period is when we'll see the the dollars for these. And I know that Derek's anxious to get it constructed as quick as possible. I don't know if we'll get it in twenty twenty four or not. Or no, we will get it in twenty twenty four. We won't get it in this summer. That outstanding, you'll see that in front of you. Hopefully we'll see a funding agreement there. You know, again, working to identify areas. And this also has a little bit of a link with some of the earthquake stuff because we're also using some of this information to help understand what some of the earthquake damages may have been.
So this is where the overflow, this is the overflow issue, correct?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Okay, and that takes us on to earthquake engineering support. We did meet a little over a month ago with the Cal O E S rep. And Travis has done a great job of putting together the list of the city projects. And I think it's gotten a lot of the damage assessment reports in already. Some of these larger projects that we really need to think about, well, what is the cost to fix? What did it total? Wait, oh, that's right. I'm holding it backwards. Sorry. Um, I don't see what I'm talking about. There we go. So, yeah, looking to bolster that information. So we know that there have been damage to the city's pouring contact basin. Trying to kind of at least figure out enough to be able to put the, you know, information and damage assessment work so that the city can get funds to fix that. We're also looking at the painter street tank. We're looking at including some of the water and sewer highlighted acrossings. This is the wastewater lift station. So right now, you know, then what we're doing is really being responsive to the city where the city needs a difficult support for documenting and really thinking ahead. Because once you get these things in and you've kind of got the dollars in there, we want to make sure that there's enough dollars to to move over there. Question, yeah. Will the Eel River Trail project be impacted by the damaged contact basin? It's right there. The goal is to put a little bridge over that area. I have to look at the designs, but earthquake damage or not, we want to avoid that area. So, yeah, so we're we're thinking about that. We need double check that with our design, but I'm pretty sure they're looking at a like, it's just like a little river bridge or something. Just to get people from one to the other.
But you're like, hey, there's that leaky tank.
Well, and it's, it's basically helping.
It's not here.
Any other question?
And the earthquake damage issue, that is not moving the state any faster. I think it is.
I will say, I will say that I have seen the state board be more responsive. And I think really what Kyle's been pushing is while they, while we have, while the city has the state board's attention, let's push. So, yeah, I've got another coworker who emails, I think, you know, almost on a weekly basis. What's the status of this? What's the status of this? So I sense a little bit more urgency on the state's part to help the city. Unfortunately, I think part of the problem is just the state's process. They're very bureaucratic and I mean, I've heard they need up to like forty signatures to to write something. It could have been twenty. That's still a lot.
That's cool.
Um, so, yeah, I think we have their ear a little bit more and we're trying to leverage that as much as possible. But their bureaucracy only goes a path, right?
Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so then the last slide. You know, as we've, we've talked about here, and one of the things that I've enjoyed working with the city of Rio Del in many years is that linkage between issues and finding funding. I think if you look back through history, my very first project I worked on for Rio Del was a Prop two oh four grant funded water supply utility study. And we leveraged that into the two thousand and six project where we replaced lines. So I really enjoy working with the city and trying to bring funds to match projects. We can't, you know, we do what we can, okay? We can't solve everything, but really want to be taking a look at what are those future funding opportunities? So Kyle mentions the hazard mitigation grant funding. So we've now seen that the city had their first successful application with the Eel River. And they do have, it's a the smaller notice of interest, you submit that, those are June eighth tenth. So it's likely they'll do that for the PD, but I think we'll also be talking about, you know, some potential other stormwater projects or things. There may be a couple of K N O I's that maybe we're submitting. Also, like Kyle mentioned, they recently have this program called Prepare California that is covering the match for economically disadvantaged communities. I think the state saw that that was becoming a burden, especially to, you know, disadvantaged communities. So we're going to go to some webinars and see how we can leverage that. So it will result in, as opposed to the current Eel River, which is only seventy five percent funded, potentially a project that's a hundred percent funded. And then the full applications are due August fourth. I will tell you those full applications are onerous. They are the most onerous application I've ever worked on. And FEMA changes the application every year just to, I think, just keep us on our toes. But, yeah, the city participated in the local hazard mitigation plan process. So really it needs to continue to leverage that involvement and leverage this program. I think is is a good path. We've already mentioned the State Water Resources Control Board. So we will, you know, we're looking at the painter street for the clean water state revolving fund. But once we get a better idea of all, you know, the the major sewer pipes in town that need to be replaced and we're going to start pushing that forward at a faster pace, we'll be submitting a construction application to replace those. On the drinking water side, we saw that we we got the grant for the the small pipeline replacement in the tank, but then we're also submitting the matching grant for the Eel River. So and the state board got a lot of the bipartisan infrastructure law funding. And so I think now is a really good time to be asking them for them. So we're definitely going to be looking at that. Also looking potentially at community development block grants. We're coming to the city and they've been updating their income survey. There's some towns where there are some areas of town, especially for potentially complete street kind of things where you want to do more than just one utility at a time. Maybe an option. And then lastly, excuse me, um, looking at the next cycle of active.
After transportation funding.
Their question? Anyone?
Randy's on it.
Yeah, yours.
Yeah, you're doing.
Just like we're just going to give you.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you so much. I was doing so good.
You are.
Yeah, are there any other questions? And then, yeah, I don't know, Kyle, if you want to go over, like I said, there's in your packet. The page is a little bit, it's page thirty, four and forty are the two pages that are his. How about forty, page forty, guys? That behind the presentation, because I'm like, wait a minute. So, yeah, it's got the many different projects on here, the pedestrian connectivity. That one is probably the most urgent because we'd like to get out and do some environmental surveys because those need to happen seasonally. And then the other two are the distribution water tank and then.
Are there any questions? Public? Any emails? Did I call for a motion? authorized, you voted to authorize the city manager to execute scopes of services for Rio Del neighborhood pedestrian connectivity improvements, Douglas tank and water system improvements, Eel River crossing pipeline seismic retrofit project phase one A. So, is there a second?
Last second.
We have a motion and a second. We vote. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Rebecca.
Let's make that better.
Drive safely. Thank you. Don't recall items approved for maintenance of an ad hoc per capita grant, dog cart and Clean California made lay dedication grant. Day sixty nine in our packets, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garant, members of the council. So this is related to kind of two of the projects that said we need to get out to bid coming up. In the very back of your packet are those items here, the large maps. And we'll, we'll go ahead and just start with the gateway one and Rose. Pull that one up real quickly. What we're just looking for basically is for both of the projects, there are some minor details that need to be worked out with an ad hoc committee before it comes back to the council for final approval. So on your screen and also in your packet are some of the the design for the gateway improvement project. So the idea here is that the council had identified some needed improvements for the gateway, in particular the tree situation. As as the council is aware, the gateway, when it initially went in, was really over the old highway. And so it was never really designed to have trees in the gateways. The trees, the vast majority of them have died off. The topsoil is only, you know, two or three inches. But it's was really designed to be a grass thoroughfare, a long thoroughfare. So when the trees were installed, the vast majority of them were installed essentially in gravel. And so there's no water retention primarily, especially during the summer, obviously. And then there's no nutrient retention for the trees. So that's why many of them have have died off and have not been terribly successful in the ground. So the idea with the grant with Clean California is to install new trees, but with digouts to allow for additional, you know, soil instead of gravel. The gravel would be removed, soil would be placed for each tree. One of the particular just problems with this, with this project, just to, just to make sure the council is aware of it, is the the project is that is is expense. So there's a lot of removal of material and a lot of replacement of material in addition to the trees. So there may need to be some modification and reduction in the number of trees. But as you can see, there are a lot of trees on each of these sections. The plan right now is to submit the R P as a design with a couple of exceptions. One would be the center median trees, these the smaller ones, the ones that are identified in pink color to to replace those instead of these kind of smaller trees with essentially landscaping either similar to the other medians of town or the bushes. So that would just be one simple change that we think can reduce some of the costs and still get the project done. And there, and then the other concept is in our bid package to also include a variety of the trees, including all those listed here as identified as being wind tolerant, vertical and colorful. To also add the the trees that are already installed on the south end of town. So those are Acer, I forget the scientific name of them, but they're actually not listed on the on the project. But they have been good additions to the downtown. So from that, then, after after the R P is issued, we would then kind of narrow down those those selections. But in terms of putting out the R P, we want to work with some members of the council before we bring it back to the council for the for the adoption of the R P. Again, giving us as much leeway in terms of getting this project implemented as possible. On the next page, so that actually on this, on your screen, let's go back there. So that's how we want to run to the right sides and north is there's towards the top of the screen. And this is the initial gateway. You can see we already have a digital sign there that was not incorporated in this particular design. We also have our Rio Del entryway sign. And so there have to be some modifications to that portion of the design. entryway sign. And so there have to be some modifications to that portion of the design. And then on the next page, the design goes all the way through to City Hall. And then you'll also see an exercise station across the street on Memorial Park here. So that's the total scope of the project. Again, there are ways that we can probably eliminate some of the trees out of it to reduce the cost. For example, the row in front of City Hall. There's already kind of, we already have a pretty good working tree situation in front of City Hall. But again, this is a Clean California grant designed to further beautify the gateway and create a better space. And so if there are no questions on that, Kevin? So that was one of the requests that was added as part of the application. And so you know, what we're trying to do is create a, you know, a healthier, I believe there are elements to Clean California, talking about healthier environments and healthier people. But it was part of the grant application that was approved.
And it wasn't to our community, get healthier, it was to promote places where community members can get together, do some exercising and improve our, you know, improve the health of the community.
Pulled into my garage. My question was, why was one piece of equipment? Was that just a plug in a grant? Is it a good starter? I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just trying.
It's all attached, it's a push of bar, chin of bar.
That particular diagram is not necessarily what exactly is going to go in there. But these facilities can be quite pricey. So it would have to be something limited. You know, not, you know, full blown, you know, park. But something to add, you know, calisthenic type activities for people who don't have those. And so Rosa wants to pull up the next slide. There we go. So this is the, on Ireland, they have a corner right there on your screen is Painter in Ireland. And so to the right side of the drawings would be Highway one oh one, the southbound lanes. So this is a property that the city has been working on for some time now to essentially create an actual parcel. It was just a piece of inventory that was created. When the highway went in and then transferred over to the ownership of the city. So looking at different parcels where we can implement a park facility using the park per capita grant. This was what ended up rising to the top as a city controlled parcel. So at the top, you have to see a landscaped area then moving down on the screen. Rosa was able to do that.
You can just reduce the scale probably. It's a what, one twenty five or something? Hit the minus button? Yeah, just reduce it to a compound. There's a minus button to the ladder, you go down one point five, there you go.
So yeah, scrolling down, you'll see that there are essentially two zones for the dog park. The upper area is obviously the larger dog run. And then the lower area is for smaller pets. So to keep this mixed use and try to encourage different uses, on the far bottom section is a, the space allows for a half basketball court. So there have been a number of complaints that the basketball courts at the school were closed after hours, after school hours. And so being adjacent to the school seemed like a a logical choice of recreational amenities. Let's go ahead and reduce it to half size.
There we go.
There you go. So there you can see the furthest lower extreme. And so Kevin, you have anything to add to that?
You know, the lot is all the sloping, obviously slopes towards the freeway there. So we should see just north of the basketball court there's a retaining wall that's going to have to be built on the north side and then on the east side, a large vital level space. We're going to have to import some building in that area as well. The idea here is to provide that recreation facility primarily due to the fact that for some reason, the school basketball courts are closed a lot of the time. And we basically provided a couple picnic tables, three picnic tables. And and some benches. There's two benches in each, one of the dog run areas as well. That there is a cross section of that north retaining wall. And you can see where the higher elevation up near Ireland has got a base elevation of a hundred and twenty-six feet, I believe. And then it slows down to a hundred and twenty feet. So there's a slope of six feet and a run of sixty feet. The retaining wall is probably going to be a large portion of the project. And the grant amount is for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, basically. And the sidewalk is going to be constructed along Ireland as part of that other active pet project that the city engineer spoke about earlier. So that does not have to be incorporated into this project as well. We don't get this out of bid in the next month or so. I'm actually trying to get together materials for this right now so we can install it. At least material items so we can get some solid numbers when this goes out to bid. And we just want to get some input from the ad hoc committee on how we want to release this and what our priorities are. We may have to do some additives or have different options, you know. One of the options may be not to put any of those benches around. Those benches are basically those hillbicker precast benches. They're roughly seven hundred and fifty dollars each. The picnic tables are roughly a thousand dollars each right now. I did give one bid for our, well, the bike with cyclone fencing. And this is just materials only. And it's about eight thousand dollars. Insulation, of course, is going to cost more. It does include some trash recycling bins, some parking spaces. There has to be some drainage improvements made as part of the project as well. A water fountain, a doggy fountain at the bottom of it. And then some landscaping associated along Ireland there. And then a couple trees near the parking area, you know, the north end of the project side as well. There's any questions, anything more than half to try and answer?
I got a question.
Any question? Can you come on, please? Thank you.
I was wondering, how much of the bounty on this dog park going to cost the city? For five years, for ten years, right? It's a dog park. You got to keep the lines cut. We got to, you know, we don't just build it and then we're done. So does anybody look down the road at all? That part of the whole thing? Just curious.
The lawn's already there, so, you know. I don't have any numbers.
Actually, apparently we already mowed that lawn. So there would be no additional maintenance and maintaining the lawn. The asphalt itself is concrete. It should have a fifty-year lifespan, at least.
So it shouldn't be caused by the city to have that dog park there?
You see what?
It shouldn't cause the city an extra dime to have the dog park maintained.
I didn't say that.
Well, that's what I'm asking. There's going to have to be some maintenance involved along the line. I mean, right?
Other than the line is going on right now. That's actually up to the responsible pet owner.
That's a good answer.
That's a hundred percent acceptable.
So if you don't, what do we do? Is there a responsible pet owner that you can do it for?
Man, I don't know. I would probably have to reach out to Fortuna and see how that operates. I'm working out for that here.
They haven't been there for two guys out, was everybody else? It's reasonable for what the mayor said. That they take responsibility for it. I don't know how it works with the rest of town. They, I see you have the bags and the
I do actually see some residents carrying their bags, which is actually a nice thing to see.
I've been personally to the Fortuna one and everybody does pretty good about picking up out of their dogs. This is a basketball or half basketball court and a dog park at the same location. Okay. What about, this is an absolutely great idea for the city. Especially for all the kids that you see play basketball that are out on the side streets that are everywhere. And I know that they've been with the basketball team for a while and the kids look for stuff like this to do. What about, my suggestion would be for like the picnic tables that are seven hundred dollars or seen about if some, if people donate them, if they put their names on them, there's local things like that.
Thank you.
Jonathan from here. Yeah, just this idea. One thing, if they're going to have benches and stuff, people want barbecue, where's the restrooms at? Where are the kids going to go use coke?
They're not running from some, that's something probably to talk about, we'll talk about.
Yeah, a hundred thousand dollars is going to cover all that, but that's a future too. And as far as the exercise equipment, I always thought it'd be cool where, you know, we could do the trail in time too. Is they have communities where you go every half mile is another calisthenic exercise that you can do. So that would be where you can incorporate that instead of just having one dinky thing right there. Then you can make it where they can do their jogging and their exercises. But, you know, I think rest would be necessary. Otherwise, it's going to turn into, you know, a stinky mess over there. And, you know, we have the fire department, you know, there's obviously issues over there too. So that would require additional help from the city to help maintain those, or volunteers from the community just to go and take care of it. So.
I don't want to get back and forth or anything, but I haven't been to a dog park that has a bathroom.
Right, but, but anyway. Granted, you're going to have a basketball court, people are going to stay longer, you have benches, people are going to have their lunches. You know, you can even set up a lot of places that have those standing barbecues where, you know, you could, people can do family outings there, you know, like it's a private park, you know.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Are these two different on committees or is it one?
If we could do one, that would be really helpful.
Wait, are you saying, okay, so there's a beautification committee already. If you want a committee, an ad hoc committee for this, you'll see these two specific things.
So, so, yeah, neither of these projects were in the purview of the beautification committee. So they were you know, authorized for application directly by the council. So my recommendation would be that the ad hoc committee be composed of the council. Really just to do these final last tweaks so that two council members can come back to the council and say, I can support this. It's just kind of the final check before this goes out.
I'm going to argue that since I have my finger on the pulse of the exercise world, that I should be on this committee also.
No.
I don't have to be on it. It's okay. If somebody else really wants to do it. No, I don't.
That's a dependent.
When it is, well, you have to, we have meetings, we have meetings when exec, when staff. It isn't.
Is able.
Yeah, when the staff sets the times for the staff, because they end at overtime and everything. So it's usually during staff time. So.
So ideally, but we want to, the quickest we can do this for our next meeting and to bring it back to the council is in May. We'd like to do the ad hoc committees preferably even sometime this week or even early next week. And then we have to do the final, you know, agenda publication the following week. So, or next week. So we have to you know, but we can hold a meeting, you know, at four or whatever is convenient for the, for the ad hoc committee members. But we're kind of hoping to do this in the next ten days or so.
I believe that you do that.
Okay, I'm available. Okay, no more else. Everyone, Frank? And you have Haley? Michael, Amanda? Many will be in some of the areas. Okay. So, everything I think that's definitely, that's it. Special resolutions. Approved resolution number one five nine seven dash twenty twenty-three authorizing the county of Humboldt to administer the city CBDG and Cal Home project and programs, including the city owner occupied and rental rehabilitation program. Page seventy-three in our package, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Gorn, and members of the council. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Paul.
Mayor Gorn, members of the council, you may remember your meeting in February seventh. Your council actually authorized the city manager to keep that M and U agreement with the county. County recently requested formalized of all revision via resolution. As such, we bring to you resolution number fifteen seventy-nine, twenty twenty-three, formally authorizing resolving that we work with the county on the Cal Home and the CBDG and programs where the owner occupied and rental rehabilitation company. And as such, there are commended on approved, resolution fifteen seventy-nine, twenty twenty-three. And if you have any questions, that'd be more than half a thing.
Question? Yeah, any questions?
No.
Okay, member of the republic, any question? The city and the county work together?
CBDG.
Yeah, the CBD program is, as the city engineer talked about, one of the stage programs that's clearly onerous. And you're almost a dedicated full-time staff person to give up on all the changes. So in order to make the best use of the time, we are partnering with the county to administer the city CBD program. They actually have the staff to resource the capacity to administer it in the months.
And that's true. Staff that's been in training to help folks like myself, because I'm part of the owner occupied rehabilitation months, and I'm second on that list.
Yeah, so you probably work with Kristen May or Andrew.
Yeah, she's been great. And I drafted a twenty-eight page application and I waited for one finish letter in the mail. I'm going to hand it over back. Hopefully it'll work.
That's exactly what it's about.
Here's the ball rolling.
Seventy-nine, twenty-three, authorizing the county to administer the CBD, city, CBD and Cal Home project and programs, including the city owner occupied and rental rehabilitation program. They have a motion and they're second. Motion carries five zero. Introduction and first reading by title only, ordinance amending chapter ten point five, use of streets for storage of vehicles prohibiting. Sections ten point five point five three zero of the Riddell Municipal Code. Page seventy-seven in our package.
Thank you, Mayor Gorn, and members of the council. I'm again going to turn it over to Mr. Paul.
Look, Mayor Gorn, members of the council, this is actually coming to do community services.
Um, this is actually coming to do community services officers responsibilities. Um, she has brought us to our attention. That when she's out enforcing the parking regulations, which requires a car to move every seventy-two hours. These cars are literally moving a foot or two um, to basically avoid um, the intent of the regulation. And so what we've suggested is some language here to tighten that up. And that starts on page seventy-eight. Um, what you see, ten point zero, five point five three zero, use of streets for storage of vehicles prohibited. Um, everything in blue is additional language and the intent here is So again, the mayor indicated this is the first reading. Uh, I would recommend that you continue the assignment to the May second meeting or the second meeting in adoption unless there are any questions from the council or members of the public that I could answer.
Thank you.
I just took a comment. Um, and I, and I think this is great that you're doing this because we've talked in the past to the previous police chief and, and even, and our current police chief, that people were taking really big advantage of the and, and for a period of time, I had some people living in front of my house, getting long, there's a long stretch there of, or the mailbox is on the law. And they have, um, I don't know, a lot of cars. I said whoever owned, whoever was doing this was, they referred to him, uh, uh, cheap cars and that there were carpooling. And what they did is they moved cars around the city, but they, they got to the point where they were living in these cars. They were taken. There, there was two or three of them they had in front of the house and they would go. They had blankets and pizza boxes and all that stuff. And every morning you'd get up and they would, they would rearrange one or two of them. But there was always one that was there for a long period of time. And so because they do this, only move them a foot or, or whatever. Uh, they've been, the police have been limited to be able to do anything. And so this'll, um, this'll be a big step. To, I mean, they'll figure out a way to plus the police, but uh, this'll, this'll should hopefully lower that they're not doing the, what they shouldn't be doing.
I think so. And I should, um, mention that we actually took this to the New York City meeting or the traffic committee, I'm sorry. The city as well.
Yeah, it's like you said, with the whole.
Yeah, and it was overwhelmingly supported by all committees.
I, I believe it.
It's a visibility safety thing too, I think.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, my only question is, um, how is there anything in the law that prevents them from just driving away for a few hours and then pulling it right back in the same spot? I know it says you, but the people that use the vehicles and they go to their job and then they come and they park it there for three days and then they go to their job and they come and they park it there for three days. It's saying, it's still the same visibility issue and same security issue. Yeah, I certainly understand the question. I would have to defer to the police chief for that one. And I hope that he's around on the meeting of May second. And um, we can ask him that question at that point. I apologize.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor Doran. No, no question. I like it. We appreciate that all the work those stood into us. Um, so is there, um, I think I have to have a look and then consider.
Yeah, I'm ready. The second.
Continue. I salute to the second, to the first meeting of May. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion for the second. Um, California Wilson? So we, um, we got a motion on the floor, two.
One sure.
Yeah, motion carries five zero. Council reports and communication, Mayor Proton.
Thank you. Uh, I attended a meeting of the Redwood Regional Hydrodynamic Development Commission on March twenty-third. We heard from the offshore wind people. Um, nothing was very concrete or um, specific. Their most specific feedback was, this isn't terragin. So.
This is a one.
Terragin, the, the other one. So, um, it, it sounds like that is moving along. Um, there was a whole and lots of work from that. And we have a new standing to come up here at three P. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
Um, have the H C O this Thursday. Um, if they let me have the live, I will be back next meeting.
All right. Councilman for a little?
Yeah, I went to the, um, the records of the fire department meeting last week and, um, as usual, they've had a lot of calls. And I, I cast the.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, there was a lot of call.
Dude.
Thank you. And we, um, I can't think of anything else that's been going on. There's been some good things going on at any resource center downtown. Lots, lots of good things, people meeting, people coming to, um, we have the senior luncheon and more people are coming. It's nice to interact with the different people. And just lots of other things going on down there. And then we have the, what is it, the CRT?
The uh, community training will be the last weekend of the year.
Yeah.
And I think there's still four seats.
Oh, great.
There's still seats open. There's three day thing and you can. Um, can I just ask, what, what did you just say? Are there still open seats? Yes, there's, there are still four seats. Um, I spoke with Linda today. Um, but I'm gonna say three seats because she asked about, um, one of the seats. So I think there are three seats still available. And do you know if they're mostly from our area? Yes. Um, I think they're mostly from us and then I think there might be one or two people from Fortuna who are already in the program. Um, and just need to finish up a few things from the fire department. Um, yeah, so, but most everyone agrees that I'll support perhaps, so they're, I don't know that actually. That's all for me. Okay, thank you. California Wilson?
I have a, oh. I had an H W M meeting last week. This is uh, coming next week, we have another H W M meeting, we're doing the budget. And uh, also R C A meeting on, on the second day. So it's gonna be a, interesting one, but uh, the budget, you're, if you go to H A, H W M and you're calling we, which is garbage, you're probably gonna see a lot of crazy, they're tipping fees. And uh, with a lot of the stuff that people are bringing in or to get it out. And then also the, uh, they're working on this thirteen eighty-three thing to, uh, they're to, they resurface the floor so that they can handle the amount of organic waste that comes in. And this is a thing that was brought up in the meeting is that most of the people in the county don't realize every day H W M A in conjunction with, I believe, recologies takes out ten uh, chip truck field that, that were used to stand. They take ten, ten of those a day and go out three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That is hauled out of Humble County and haul to, it goes up to White City where there's a landfill that they haul out. And so.
Back California?
Yes, that's what we're trying to buy that. And uh, but the, in the amount of, the amount of cost to do that is, is pretty monumental because you gotta haul out and there's a battle to bring, what, what do you bring back in a chip truck? Now, you know, bringing it back in a chip. You used to cook your chips, but you had, didn't have anything to take up to them. And so, um, this is the step towards the, by getting that, um, surface and then immediately they approve surfacing the floor. There's like this I'm gonna say it's pushing half a million dollars to resurface the floors and the doors. The doors are welded open from the way that the the old garbage stuff was done. And now it's being turned into this organic, um, facility to where they can move the organics out of it, until they can build an organic processing system in the county. And there's plans to do that to where they will actually probably bring in organic processing because every city in the state is gonna have to deal with the organics. And if you don't, if you don't do it in a collective like it's done here in Humble County, every city would be responsible. Actually, every city is responsible for that. You know, there, there's an executive committee, which is, I think you're on the, on the executive committee that's composed of all of the I believe the city managers, um, of the county. And so they overview this as well as, uh, the H W M A is. So it's, it's got a lot of eyes and it's a big deal to the people about how you're gonna, you're gonna process that, like Mr. Flor said, you're you're gonna have to process the, those chicken bones and Mexican, Mexican taters you need, uh, those are, those are considered organic along with the weeds that, um, you put in your greenways. So that has not, the idea is that doesn't go in the landfill because it creates a horrendous amount of methane gas to, when it goes.
Thank you. Um, and I have nothing I that, other than I was at the disaster traumatology training today and tomorrow in Blue Lake. Um, uh, Sarah from the Community Center, Resource Center. Sarah's attending, Heather from D H S is attending. Um, gentleman Andrew from Red Red Cross is attending. There's a lot of people who are here supporting Red Hill at this disaster traumatology training. Learning how to better help people get through the, any kind of, um, um, emotional issues related to any disaster, fire, earthquake, flooding, anything, um, so that we can better serve the, um, the, the public in times of disaster. So that's what that is, that is about, the, the training. And, um, and that's it, I think. So their motion to adjourn?
Eighty.
Oh, um. We got the shot. Well, I mean, there's, it's the end of the agenda and we are, by law, to follow the agenda.
So what I was told at the last council meeting was I was going to give three and fours.
No, I understand.
So you might just left out in the old.
We will, we are going to address it. I said that at the end of the comment of the public comment. It's not on the agenda, it's an actual legal thing that we could be in violation if we just start dealing with things that weren't agendaed. I said to you, well, I, I said to you that we will talk, we will, we will agenda these things and we will. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to pick you up. I'm telling you what the law is and that's the law. I, 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 I know, I, no, there's, there are so many. Can turn it to a base second?